We're here for the planning board meeting of April 3rd, 2025. Let's stand and open. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on our proposed agenda is minutes, March 13th minutes. Does anyone have any comments? Have they been?
There's a box to guess.
If there are no comments, can we have a motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of 13th?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, bills. Do we have any bills?
Yes, we do have three bills. Let's see, one is reimbursement to Cooper for signing up for the online version of the National Planning Conference. Bill from the Lowell Sun for advertising for the zoning bylaw amendments that are coming up at the Maytown meeting. And then reimbursement of the refund, no, the refund of the remaining peer review account for 550 Newtown Road.
Okay. We'll pass that around. The next item is Dean Lane. As we understand it, I don't know what the actual status is, but the intention is for the developers of Cooper Farm to donate the site of the remaining affordable unit to Habitat for Humanity. And are, this is outside of our, well, it's not outside of our purview, but we're not, whatever agreement is outside of our input. However, I would like to see, and the town council would like to see, a vote of support for this. And I'm gonna ask, well, Daryl, you're, the four of us who are not Daryl are very cognizant of this situation.
Yeah. I guess it's really simple. Let's bring to closure the issue of the affordable unit.
And frankly, closure has been really difficult.
Yes.
And this particular closure, I don't know, a couple of years ago, this was brought up, and we were sort of despairing of it ever going forward. So the fact that it is going forward is a good thing. Is it appropriate for me to make the motion?
If nobody else does.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So have we, so it looks like the fields have been worked directly with Habitat. Is that correct, to be able to determine whatever their terms of agreement are?
Yes.
And do we have any sense of what that entails?
I think it's, what does town council say about that? I mean...
I have no information on conversations between the developer and Habitat. I did speak with Habitat, and they are, would be happy to accept the property.
Okay.
And move forward with building an affordable unit there. Their timing would follow development of the duplex at Tehadwon Road, and they would like to do that one, do Dean Lane immediately after that one.
Okay. That's all I know.
Okay. All right. Would it be possible to be able to get whatever?
I think we should get a communication from the, since this, in what manner is this going through town council? In terms of what is the, is it because we had the pending lawsuit or whatever?
Yeah, just, my question to town council is, does, is the planning board, do the planning board, does the planning board need to do anything to move this forward? And he recommended a vote.
Well, we can, we can, we can do a non-specific vote of support for the conveyance of the remaining Dean Lane lot to Habitat for Humanity.
Okay. Part of the reason why I ask is slightly different had Affordable Housing Trust. I just think because we kind of monitor that to be able to see affordable housing units in the town, it would be good to just be able to keep apprised of what constitutes this agreement. And as Marin said, you've had the preliminary talk with Habitat, and it would be after the Tehadwon Road, but it's always good to have things in writing, just so there's no...
So could we, is this a ZVA issued special permit, or is it a planning board permit?
It, there's no permit involved.
Well, I'm just saying, because it sounds like they're negotiating with ZVA on this, not us, or, I'm just wondering why this says the ZVA.
Okay. It was initially a planning board special permit for the entire development. Issue went to zoning board of appeals when the building permit was not issued for that last unit. And it turns, through that process, it turned out that the last unit is supposed to be affordable. And so if Habitat, for example, goes to pull the building permit on that last lot, and it's an affordable unit, then that building permit can issue for an affordable unit.
Yeah, it's basically clarifying who's got the final decision on this. So ZVA will release the...
No, no. Final decision is, is building commissioner at this point.
So who directs the building commissioner to, to release the lot, then? I'm just, it's a process question. I don't want to get wrapped up in...
Right. It's, it's his authority to do that. No, no direction from either board.
So it was on his authority that he denied them the final...
Right.
It was actually the previous building inspector, yes.
Right. And it was a...
So I think to cover our bases, we should, if something, we should remind the new building inspector that there's a, he knows.
Okay.
So just so that covers it. He knows that no permit should be issued unless it's an affordable unit.
Yeah, and it's marked as such in our permitting software.
Okay, okay.
We have permitting software?
We do.
So...
Yeah, and I only say that because it would be a real shame if somehow one day we realize, oh, there's a house that's gonna be built there, and it's a market rate house, and, you know, it's, we just don't want any confusion about that.
We've bent one off of this.
You couldn't get a building permit for that. So I'll make a motion that we endorse the plan to convey it to Habitat. To convey...
Lots 19 and...
Well, it's 20, I think, isn't it?
It's, it's one parcel.
Yeah, just say the remaining...
Parcel to Habitat Humanity.
For the construction of a...
Affordable unit.
Right. Okay. Second?
Second.
Daryl? Aye.
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 And I just want to thank Marin and Cooper for their hard work to keep this in the air. This has been going on for a while.
I know, and when Marin called me, it was funny, because I was thinking, just the week before, like, how are we gonna push this along? Because we sort of got to the end of our rope in, in sort of compelling them to do this. And we had some angry confrontations in this room with developers about it. Anyway, okay, next. Any member input? Anything going on in the town newsletter regarding our efforts?
Yeah, so the newsletter did include a quick update on the marijuana bylaw and the floodplain bylaw moving forward. There's also an announcement of a public information session on April 9th in the multipurpose room about the two town meeting warrant articles for the disposition of this building.
Okay. The, the last item on board business is public input. For those of, I don't know if any of you are here for that purpose, but it will last for no more than 10 minutes, and speakers are allowed to speak for no longer than two minutes. Is anyone here for the public input part?
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Carolyn Miller, 8 East Ragsberry Drive. First of all, I was wondering, the town scenic road bylaw, if that has, if there's any, is that under the planning board? So I know on Foster Street, I think I talked to you, Jeff, about, that would be under highway, to talk to highway about the stone walls that they've kind of, they've torn up, but the rocks are still there, so I'm hopeful that they're going to put them back afterwards? Okay?
Yes, the construction plan is to replace those.
Okay, great. And then I noticed that the Glady property at 195 Tehadwon Road, I know that that project has completely changed, I think they're just, maybe a private builder's building a couple of homes there, but in front of the, where the cornfield used to be, to the left of the Glady house, there's a lot of trees that are tagged right now, and so there's a stone wall there, too, that I'm sure they'll have to take some of it down just to make access. But I was wondering what, what, who would oversee that if it's a private person building there?
It's a good question. Is that building commissioner?
So as part of the building permit application, I have the opportunity to review those, Cooper and I have the opportunity to review those, and if it's on a scenic roadway and it doesn't yet have a scenic roadway permit, we flag that and ask the building commissioner to have them come in with an, with an application.
So it would happen before, because I know sometimes it happens after, we see it happen after, but it should be before? If all things work well, okay, I'll take that.
And if it does happen to be after, then you have to work with it.
And the previous developer, the scenic roadway for cuts, when they did this with the subdivision?
I believe that was part of their initial application.
So they might be using the existing that's already been approved from the, I think they are, actually. Anyway.
Okay, thank you.
We can always locate it.
Okay. And then you should just mention the hearing for this building. If, if everything all goes through, and that's gonna go through as affordable housing, what, what does this board have to do with that? Like, do you have permits and things, or is that separate from the planning board when it gets to that stage?
That would depend on the permitting process that the developer decides to go through. My current guess is that it would be a friendly, friendly 40B application to the zoning board of appeals. That would likely also include a site plan review for the planning board.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Under that process, there is a lot of leeway for design review.
Yeah.
And I should mention that Carolyn is on the historic commission?
Society.
Society. But there is a group who are anxious about the historic aspect to this movement. Okay, thank you. Six, we passed 640. The agenda item is 31 Shattuck Street, A&R. This is the building that is next to the, the new senior center, which was bought by the town for the purposes of that project, and is now been re, the property's been reconfigured, and, anyway, Mayor, why don't you describe, why don't you comment on the A&R?
Okay, so what I've done is I pulled up the partial site plan from the new senior center, Shattuck Center. They had anticipated doing a new lot line that looked something like this, but as they're reviewing the site on this slope from the backyard down to the side of the senior center is something that not, that should be under the control of, of the town. So they would like to do a new lot line that skirts the top of that slope, and that'll allow the town to install a fence along there. Makes for a much safer backyard for this home, and then they would square off the front. So because the existing frontage, it's already pre-existing, non-conforming, so it will need both planning board signature and zoning board appeals dimensional variance, but none of that can happen until they get through land court, because it's also land court property. So eventually, there will be an A&R application to planning board on this.
So there's nothing we can do until they get...
Right, until, actually, I don't know.
Is there a timeframe for this?
They would like to have it done yesterday. It all depends on, on their land court timeframe. Land court hearing has been set. They kind of docket these, try to give applicants a timeline for when they'll get a response.
What is the land court issue?
Link, basically, 495 isn't, wasn't put where it was supposed to be.
It's probably registered land, that's why it's in the court.
Right, so where very old deeds reference certain stone walls or fences that have since, long since been moved, it's the legal process to establish exactly where the boundaries are.
Okay. I just had no idea. Another quick question related to, to this property. About six months ago, maybe, we sent a letter to the select board asking whether or not they would consider deed restricting this house. Did we ever get a response from the select board on that?
We have not received a written response. The budget process, through the budget process, I heard that the town intends to use the proceeds from the sale of this property to help pay down the town's sewer debt.
Okay. 645 has been reached. Item, agenda item number three is a continued public hearing. The Water Resource District Special Permit, Site Plan Amendment, and Stormwater Review, 55 Russell Street, which are the new tennis courts, which is grouped in with the updated baseball field at Littleton Middle School and Russell Street School. And we hope to vote on that tonight. The last meeting, we ended with a sort of wanting to know the peer review for the drainage of that site. That was the issue. So could we have a, well, we have the two, we have the activitas, is that it? Who has designed the tennis courts, and we have our town peer reviewer, Green International, here, so...
So, as you saw, we provided response to the comments, so I guess, do you want to start? Or how do you want to? Most of the comments on the peer review were just asking for additional notes on plans, which we will add those to plans.
Okay.
And then I think, in terms of the baseball field, we do need to provide an additional narrative and calculations to show the design for the stormwater for the baseball field. When we came before you last time, we were of the opinion that no additional BMPs needed to be put in there, just due to the minimal and added impervious to get just ADA access to all the different places. But peer reviewer indicated that he wanted to see calculations as far as that. We've started to work on those calculations and have found that the added impervious will cause a bit of a curb number change and will cause a little bit more runoff from the site. So we're actually proposing to switch that asphalt material to porous asphalt material to allow things to infiltrate, and then we will provide the, the calculations and the addition to the report to show how that, that will meet the stormwater standards.
Okay. Peer review in action.
So, yeah, I guess, one of the other comments, I mean, I read through all the responses, and it looks like you're addressing everything. There's only two comments that look like you kind of pushed back on. One was the, so the project is within a zone two, which is like, which is a wellhead protection area, which means it's above an aquifer. So you're supposed to provide 44% TSS removal for pretreatment, which is basically, you either have two pretreatment devices, or you use like a proprietary device. I understand, you know, it's a tennis court and a baseball field, so, you know, that might be excessive for this, but it is one of the rules in the, you know, part of the stormwater standards. So I did want to, you know, alert the board about that, that they weren't providing, well, they weren't providing any pretreatment, actually, in the initial. So are you planning on providing pretreatment now?
So I can, I can address that. So that standard is written for roadways. The stormwater standards don't have guidance for uses like this, where it is strictly pedestrian. So by just restricting the use to pedestrian use, no cars, very limited cars involved, it might be a truck maybe once a year to come on and maintain it, but it won't be parked on those. And the new walkways that are there are accessing only the, only the courts and only the baseball field, so those don't need to be treated in winter with sand or salt. So just by nature of the use, it's not creating TSS, so just by nature of restricting the use that way, we don't need to provide that, that water quality, because it's already being, that standard's already being met just by limiting the use to just pedestrian.
So TSS is...
Total suspended solids.
Okay. So this is for salt, stuff that falls off vehicles?
Typically, it's oil, solids.
Like a grease trap or something.
Sediment, like, you know, bird droppings, you know, like anything, you know? You know, leaves, like anything that kind of degrades. The thing is, the stormwater standards don't specifically say that it's just for roadways, you know? It says you have to treat roof runoff, too, you know, nobody's walking on the roof. And so for roof runoff, you don't have to provide any pretreatment, because there is less TSS on roof, but you still have to provide treatment. And that's kind of where, we're kind of differentiating on our interpretation of the rule.
So is there no treatment now?
So the infiltration basin, just by nature, will treat. We just didn't provide the calculations to prove that it was meeting the water quality volume of one inch. However, I do think that if we went back and did the calculations, it would likely be, be meeting that.
So, yeah, I just want to see the calculations, to show they meet the one inch.
Okay. And that is it for this final go around?
Right, yeah. It seems everything else they're gonna address. So, I mean, I haven't seen the revised plans, or revised calculations, but everything else, they, they agree with our comments, and they're gonna address. So it was just the water quality. We just wanted to see the pretreatment, and some sort of pretreatment, and that they're meeting the one inch for water quality.
So the key thing is some sort of pretreatment. I think that most of us probably could get our heads around not requiring two, you know, the dual treatment. So, or comments? Now, I should preface this. We would like to vote today, and if we, you know, when we do vote, even when we do vote, we can apply conditions to the decision. Any comments?
My only comment is about the use of it. Last time we left it open, that the school department didn't want it used during the day, and I felt that was unacceptable, that it should be available for all the residents in the town of Littleton to be used, even if there's people in the school. I mean, it's not gonna affect students that are in the building, and I don't know people playing there.
So Mark, I went back and clarified that. In our pre-construction meeting, when we were meeting with all of the, the larger group, that was, that was something that was brought up at the time by the principal, at the time, you know, being concerned that there wasn't gonna be the grass space, there was gonna be tennis and things like that. So in my conversations to follow up since our last meeting, you know, obviously, the other facilities are, you know, usable and everything else, and this one, we've, we've all come to the conclusion this one would be no different. People might have a park at Alumni Field and walk over, but, yep.
That'll be about, okay, that's all.
Yeah, the only, the only thing back and forth was just for, you know, the school kids' use and everything. If they were utilizing that PE classes, that, you know, we would, we would yield way to that kind of activity.
Can I hear a motion?
I'd like to motion that we...
Oh, we have to close the hearing first.
Make the motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Now can we have a motion to approve the Water Resource District Special Permit, Site Plan Amendment, and Stormwater Review for the 50 tennis, new tennis courts and baseball field at 55 Russell Street? And with the condition that, well...
What do you want to call it? That the...
I'm actually, and I'm making this, I shouldn't be making the, the motion, but basically, we have discussed that our peer reviewer is satisfied with the calculations that you will supply them, and we are specifically only requiring a, the pre, I don't know the technical term, but the pre-treat, not, not the, not the super pretreatment, but the pretreatment.
So, yeah, basically, if you could put like a forbay on the basin, I think that would probably be good enough.
Is that okay?
We can be agreeable to putting some sort of pretreatment in there. I don't, I just don't want to promise it'll be a forbay, because I don't know that we have the space over there to do that, but we will, we can provide pretreatment.
Okay.
So it needs to be conditioned upon?
Yes.
That getting resolved, yeah.
So there is, was a draft decision prepared, and it does reference peer review comments from Green dated 3/21. We can clarify with these last few issues to include pretreatment. That's the only update I've heard. And that, that condition, I'll act, it says that those have to be resolved to the planning board's reasonable satisfaction prior to issuance of a building permit. So there's some time to work through those details.
So moved. Excellent. Can I hear a second? All in favor, Daryl? Aye. Anna?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
And I'm in aye. Okay. So continue working together, all of you guys. Thank you for bringing this forward. The next, the, the last item is...
I have another question. Are you gonna listen up to the public about 55 Russell, or no?
Well, we closed the hearing.
Sitting in our backyard, so you didn't ask.
Yeah, I didn't know when we jumped in.
I apologize. We're, yeah, we're, we're just, we, we mainly have the discussion of the drainage on the site at the last meeting. There were comments about fencing. Were you part of that?
I was here.
Okay. And that's an issue for the school committee? To provide such fencing, as I recall our discussion? Do you recall the discussion about that?
So the discussion was around, so it is school property?
Yeah.
So as far as the project goes, one of the things that we did have approved was, we did have the school committee sign off on the construction plans when they were submitted. Any work that's done is obviously under their purview. As far as the actual fence was not part of the original plan, there has not been a fence out there in the history of that field. With the addition of the tennis courts and the minimizing that field down to a seven verse seven field, the usages, even as it is now, will theoretically go down. Most of the users will be inside that tennis court. It'll no longer be big enough to have the girls' cross team, which has been out there currently, the girls' middle school team, which has been playing out there. So the uses will most likely be by PE class, as well as whomever is using... So, the uses will most likely be by PE class as well as whomever is using the tennis courts and possibly our smaller user groups like U6 soccer, which is pop-up nets and some stuff like that. On top of that, as far as the budget for this project goes, it's razor thin. We have a couple adder alternates that we had built in that were things that we had pulled out in the original wishes of the project as far as when the project was first put forth. We pulled off the most of a million dollars worth of stuff out of the project. So, at this time, that just was not something that was being considered for the project.
The tennis courts will be fenced themselves, correct?
One hundred percent, three hundred and sixty degree fencing. They'll be, correct me if I'm wrong, it's eight foot along the abreviate line and the parking lot, and they'll be cut down to four foot on the baselines so that, for viewing purposes.
So, there won't be a fence at the abreviate line?
So, that's not the issue. And so, as the history of that field goes, the history of that field rimmed the long way. Now, it's directly facing my yard. So, when shooting on the goals, they were shooting towards Russell Street and towards the woods. Now, they'll be directed right at my yard. My concern is when errant, like as it is now, like I get where we live is, like, we're the ones in the photos. Like, it's, that field is directly abutting my yard now. So, I don't know if you have a photo of it anywhere.
We've seen it.
It's, now, the field turned completely ninety degrees. So, now, there's kids in our yard once in a while anyway, like balls come through at recess, like, again, I work for my city, like, I get, I'm very involved in the town. It's, I understand that it's, you know, it's just, it's like moving forwards, it is what it is, but now it's directly facing my yard. So, what's keeping kids and balls and stuff out of my yard? Who's liable for that when they come into my yard? Like, it's not the same field as it was before, just with tennis courts in it. This field is now turned completely towards my yard. So, and if you look at photos that I've seen, the corner of that field is cut off behind to the abreviate line, which is directly feet from my house.
Well, there it is now, and it looks like it's twenty feet from the abreviate, but it's a fence, there's an eight-foot-high fence there.
That's on the tennis courts.
Yeah.
The field is on the other side of the tennis court.
It's behind the tennis courts.
Right. Normally, the fields where these kids play, lacrosse, soccer, and everything, run the same way that the long way of that tennis court is.
Yeah, but now it's going to be, as you put it, it's going to be too small, you're not going to really have anything but little peewee kids. It's not going to be used like it was before. There's hardly anyone that's going to be able to use that field. Maybe gym classes at, in the afternoon, I don't think you have to worry about that, there're going to be a teacher out there and everything else. It's not going to have anywhere near the use that there is.
Classes are out there now as it is, like, and when the nature of kids, when they kick a ball or throw a ball, like, I have fifty lacrosse balls in my yard all the time. Stuff comes into my yard, kids and everything, and that was when it was oriented the other way. My concern is now that whether it's small or big or whatever, it's pointed, it's not twenty feet. You're looking at the tennis courts, and that's not my concern.
I see what you're talking about, yeah.
I'm talking about the corner of the pitch of that, this isn't the photo, the last photo I had had, that I saw. The space, in the photo that we have, the space behind the net is cut off on that angle there, and it's directly in front of the abreviate line, with the nets drawn on it right there. So, any shot or anything that misses the net, especially if you're talking about little kids, they're probably not as accurate as bigger kids, that ball, those things are coming into my yard. So...
Would it be more helpful to have this color photo up?
So, we have, yeah, it's, we have a color photo that was, that was on the town website that we're talking about, and you can see our house in the photo. We're just concerned, and we were actually told that the tennis courts were only going to be used for the high school students and that people are going to have to sign up to be able to use them. So, now they're just open to the public all day and all night.
Well, there's no lights, it won't be all night, but...
Well, I just...
Well, there's no lighting.
That was, oh, okay.
This, I think our, at the last hearing, this technically isn't part of the tennis court project. This is a school committee issue, and I understand you using this to come in and give your concerns, but...
So, where, our whole thing is, is that we had no idea this was even in the works until we were told that the town was forced to send something for us to know what was going on.
It's not forced, it's part of the process. Any butter gets a certified letter. It's just every project.
Yeah, it's just not drawn, the field isn't drawn on that photo, but that's my house, the one that's angled towards, like, that is the closest to exactly where that field is ending, right at the abreviate line. I can't, safety-wise, for my family and for...
This house right here?
Yep, and for the kids. That drawing is if you go up right to those trees, that is where that field, yeah, like...
So, this is the, I don't know if you have that anywhere, but you can see the blue courts, yes? No? So, that actually doesn't have it in there. So, this is a photo that I have from the website, from the town. It has the soccer fields and it has the tennis courts, and where the goal is, is literally feet away from where the path through is from our yard into the middle school.
Like, again, it's more of a, every budget's razor thin. Like, I said, I work for the city, I completely understand.
That picture then shows the goal's going this way.
It's not a...
That, well, that's how it is now, but in the photo, I mean, can you show, like, I don't know where you draw it.
I don't know, I don't know. It's on the town website.
This is really a school department issue.
Can you show that photo to Maureen and see if she can find it? Please, thank you.
It's this one, so it shows the soccer field.
That was not part of this application. Your application includes the tennis courts and the baseball field, not the orientation of a soccer, you know.
Is there even going to be a soccer field out there? Isn't it just going to be a field? So, there's not going to be a...
Not have lines or anything like this? This is the pitch of the ice.
So, I can't speak to whether they're going to align it in the future. There is the ability to fit a full-size seventy-seven field, which is what that was meant to show, I think, when that original drawing was made. Currently, that is a green space, and we are in, working on the tennis courts, and that will remain a green space, used to be determined in the future.
So, you're not proposing a field out there?
No.
The question was asked when we were going through the preliminary construction stuff is what size field would fit there? The answer's a seventy-seven field, which that drawn specifically just represents. I will say that with our U6s in that space that they use, they typically run the other direction because there's a little black fence that keeps the balls from going into the retaining pond. So, yeah, currently, we don't actually have soccer goals on that field, there's only field hockey goals, so...
Well, then, obviously, that'd be a concern also. If they, if they have to change the orientation of the field, field hockey balls, lacrosse balls, I'm more worried about people coming into my yard now if things are aimed at my yard. We have things, kids, and again, it doesn't bother me when kids come in to get a ball, I've done it, you know, my whole life myself when we were growing up, but now, like, we are getting people in our yard when it's going that way. Now that it would be facing my yard, obviously, there's nothing stopping a soccer ball, a kid, a baseball, you know, field hockey ball, anything, from just naturally coming into the yard, which to me, it seems simply you could fix with a four-foot fence.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
But that's not part of our remit here. We're here to approve the tennis courts.
So, why don't we send a letter back to the, to the school department that in the course of our deliberation, that it's been suggested that at the very least, a four-foot field, four-foot fence should be installed to at least mitigate errant...
And it's really that one property, because...
So, our neighbors next to us, the ones in the front...
Fine, so there's two, but it's not the entire property line where the abreviate is, it's just where the field will be.
It's mainly where the...
Yeah, like, it's where, like, you know, the tennis court one, an eight-foot fence, if that's what he said it was going to be, that...
Yeah, then nothing's coming in.
Plus, there's a drainage... My dogs would love an errant tennis ball coming over those eight-foot fence, I can promise you that. No one's getting them back.
We're not concerned about, we're just concerned about the right side of the field, but that butts up into, like, right end in our yard.
Send that back, yeah, we'll send it?
Yeah, I agree, a letter to the school committee.
Like I said originally, I mean, the intention is that this will, this green space is really going to be used by PE classes and possibly the little, littlest soccer players that we have, which are the pop-up nets.
How about if we do it this way? How about if we send a letter back that, you know, it's going to be green space as it is now, if at some, at a later date, you decide to put an actual field out there, you should consider errant balls and putting a fence up if you're going to put a field out there.
I think that's fair. I mean, the whole point of this project was to try to move most of the usages to the high school space anyway, so, I think, I think that's...
I appreciate that.
So, yeah, because if, as what explained this whole project is, they reorganized the high school field so that all the soccer, field, hockey, et cetera, goes there, and then the softball and baseball goes to the Russell Street things. So, anyway, I appreciate you coming in. I apologize, I should have asked.
I didn't know.
We did.
It's okay, no, it's my fault, so, anyway.
Appreciate you guys, thank you for offering that up.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So, our next item is item number four, and if you...
Any name for the fields, by the way, just in curious?
We haven't gotten there yet.
All right, just wondering.
We have the what?
I just want to know if they were going to name the fields.
Okay. Why is that, Mark?
No, no reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Our next item, and the last item...
Last item.
Is discussed May 6th, annual town meeting. We have a zoning bylaw amendment to amend adult-use marijuana establishments to preclude the cultivation of adult-use marijuana in town. We attended a select board meeting where they voted to approve putting this on the town, on the ballot. We have a zoning bylaw amendment as part of this to clarify air quality special permit requirements for medical marijuana treatment centers, and this is to bring the treatment, the HVC treatment in these facilities up to our, I think, really positive standard. And then, zoning bylaw amendment to amend wetlands and floodplain bylaws. To this, to conform with FEMA requirements and state requirements, which will allow people who do make use of flood insurance to maintain their flood insurance. Do you want to? We have...
Yeah, I can jump in. So, I put together a couple of charts to overview the changes for the marijuana use, and staff have made them much more presentable than what I had here. But I tried to just basically keep it simple, try to just review, you know, what the actual changes are, a little bit about the process. The first chart was the process, make sure people understood it was two-thirds town meeting vote and simple majority at the ballot, so they'd see it in two parts. Next one was just an overview of what's currently allowed and what will be prohibited, there with a note that the existing cultivator is, would continue until they give up their license. And then, the last chart is just basically what the red line changes are. And...
Even, I think the other thing to mention, because even in the, with the selectmen, one of the comments made me think that they're not focused enough on that this is simply a cultivation, it's not a retail...
Right, I think I was going to clarify that, that this doesn't affect retail sales or anything like that, which I think there is probably support for that. I think it's the cultivators that is the piece there. One comment that I probably need to technically look at, people with, I intentionally didn't use red in my thing there for people that have red colorblindness, they can't see the changes, so I was just thinking we got to make sure that we're sensitive to making sure that the, we address the disabilities that some people have there. But I think, I think they're all strike-through changes, so those will show up even, even if you are color impaired.
Any comments?
I just thought it was really helpful in its simplicity. Thank you.
It has to be simple.
Yes.
And this, we're lucky because we did the hard work last fall, and now we can do just something.
And just cruise by.
Well, I would never assume that two-thirds is two-thirds. No, two-thirds is a pretty rigid standard.
And there will be, you know, people commenting.
And I think the big thing, we again mentioned it, is this is nothing about the sales, it's only the cultivators.
Right. Anyone here to comment on this? So, we've come to the end of our agenda.
So, we have more?
You got a whole, you got a quick little presentation on Article 38, which is the, again, it just follows the same thing.
And just to let you know, the article numbers have changed and we'll update accordingly.
It's kind of the format that I was just thinking of, how we'd walk people through, tell them what the purpose of this was, administrative corrections, and then what the process is, and then the next chart just has what the changes are. Adds the words OR MTC to two other things there, just to emphasize it, it's a, basically an administrative clerical correction. I missed in the original one there. And if you'd like, I could probably put together some charts for...
Well, I mean, I don't want to confuse the issue, but the whole MTC thing comes about because we have a marijuana, medical marijuana cultivator, and they will not allow us to eliminate the MTC...
Cultivator, right. So, that one has to remain.
That one has to remain. I mean, if that comes up in a question.
Actually, we do, did start some slides for the, for, yeah. Actually, the state's website has a lot of good information that we borrowed.
Yeah, I think the toughest part on just presenting this one is, is it's not really up for debate. This is what the floodplain is, and we're just adopting it, not, there's no debate on it. Be careful not to say that because it tours people off, but basically, this is, you know, if you don't vote for it, there's negative consequences, so everybody in the floodplain.
So, Maren has told me that there are known to be eleven properties that maintain flood insurance through this program. Can we get any more info on that?
Yeah, that's the number that I...
Is that the number? So, you've mentioned that, there are eleven properties that take advantage of this flood insurance.
And then, there was a request to approve the wording, the slight wording change, so...
Yep. So, if the board would vote to add the last phrase that was missing from, inadvertently missing from the prior versions, and a placement of modular, not modular...
Isn't it?
Manufacture?
Manufacture.
Manufacture.
It's on the cover, oh, it's on the first page of the cover page.
So, this is an example of the state review actually...
Picked up something we missed.
Well, I mean, something pretty, it wasn't a major thing, but I mean, I guess they go literally word for word to the FEMA.
Yeah, and then, this was after working with her for, since, in detail since January, and it's like, okay, one final review, caught that, which was a good thing to catch it now rather than having to go back, so if the board could vote to add that.
Yeah, so, so in the chart, it had to say the MAP panels and whatever the additional changes.
The warrant will be printed with that in it, so...
So, explain to me the action we need.
That one? That motion?
Can I have a motion?
To add placement of manufactured homes?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Daryl?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sure.
On that note, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
We're done, right?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're done. On that note, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
They're done, right?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're done.
Thank you.